Good evening, everyone. Welcome back from your week vacation. This is the Holyoke Public Schools Committee meeting, April 25th, and we will start at 6:01. April 22nd. Did I say 25? I'm just looking forward to Friday. I'm sorry. Liz, any public comment? No roll call. Roll call. Let's do roll call. Present.
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 Here.
Here.
Present.
Here.
And now for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Liz, anyone sign up for a public comment? Nobody signed up. Great. So I am going... We're gonna start with the recognition.
Yes.
For Mr. Gary Rome.
Yep.
Excellent. Well, this evening, we are recognizing Mr. Gary Rome for all of, I mean, his partnership with the public schools, the community. And so what happened is that the Holyoke School Committee put in a nomination, and we kinda said why we're nominating him for the Outstanding Community Partner through the Massachusetts School Association, School Board Association. And I'm just gonna highlight some of the things that we, the reasons why we nominated you. So in 2017, Gary Rome Hyundai teamed up with the Holyoke Educators by having representatives of the dealership use luxury golf carts to drive educators from the Dunnehugh School through the Tokoniki and Farnham Drive neighborhoods of their students for home visits. A dozen educators from the school visited. In 2010 and 18, Gary Rome Hyundai donated a car to a qualified high school student through Gary's Year of Excellence campaign to encourage high school seniors from Holyoke to excel in their senior year. Students maintaining a good grade and attendance through the end of their senior year qualified to be in the drawing for the car. Gary Rome, who has chaired and sponsored the Light Up the Night Walk to raise funds for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society, he has launched a Drive Pin campaign and has raised over $25,000 for this important initiative. His auto dealership sponsors Fashion with Compassion. That's a hot, a hot one. Event to benefit Providence Ministries and Holyoke. The goal is to be fashionable and compassionate while raising money to support programs dealing with ending hunger and homelessness and to support recovery. In 2013, he raffled a three-year lease of a brand-new Hyundai to benefit the Holyoke Public Library's Next Hundred Years Campaign to renovate and expand the library. And other community activities that he's involved with is member of the Holyoke Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber's Superintendent's Advisory Committee, Chamber's Government Affairs Committee Member, Holyoke Community College Foundation Board of Directors, the Holyoke Taxpayers Association Board of Directors, and the Young Presidents Association Member. When do you have time? Just wondering. You have been a great asset, a great help, and we thank you so much for the partnership that you have provided with the Holyoke Public Schools. And so on behalf of the Holyoke School Committee and your nomination through, to the MASC, we are going to give you a nice, beautiful plaque. And I invite Devin, who is the President of MASC.
Beautiful. Very nice. Very nice.
I do wanna say that we're gonna renew our commitment, and we will be offering a car for the next school year for graduating senior.
Nice. Nice.
Is there any way that I could be part of that car drawing? Maybe we can do it for HCC?
Mariani's.
Reliving your youth.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Gary Rome?
No. Thank you for everything that you do.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to say thank you as well. It's been, you know, the last, only been on school committee for a few years, and it's very exciting watching our graduates at the high school have an opportunity to win a car on top of everything else that the City of Holyoke gives to our students, and we really, really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You might not wanna miss, you may wanna attend that fashion show.
I would love to.
It's May 10th. Alex will be there. You'll be walking this year, right? Okay.
Nice.
Thank you so much again for everything.
Strutting, not walking.
Moving on to communications and reports, student reports. It is your turn. What's new at Dean Campus?
We are still doing school activities, student-led school activities. We are still doing town halls, but this past couple months, the, we gave the sophomores and freshmen and juniors as well, a chance to kinda shape their own town hall, and it was, we tried giving them everything they wanted, but obviously, we had to go by the principal and such. But we have it student-led, and for the May month, we're having the seniors have their last town hall. And in the town halls, we recognize teachers and students for working hard, being kind. And really, that's just it. Seniors are just preparing to take off into their new journey.
Is the town hall together with the North Campus or?
Just this campus.
Oh, okay. All right, awesome. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Any questions? No? No? Thank you again. Next is, we're moving, according to, okay. We invite Betty Medina Lichtenstein for Enlace de Familias partnership with Holyoke Public Schools.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the school committee. I come before you. I was asked to come. You have some questions of me. I've prepared some information for you. Not sure how you would like to conduct this interview.
So really quick, Betty, if you can just give an overview for all the members and plus those watching from home, how it is that you're partnered with the Holyoke Public Schools, and obviously, I know what the CRA is and what the process is.
Sure. Thank you. So thank you for the invitation. Back in 2012, the Senate, our legislators, and also the trial court took a look at what was happening with the Chins. It was a child in need of services, and they made a decision to change that and to convert it to, to create a new system that is called a Child Requiring Assistance, which I have provided you with not only their booklet explaining what is it, but for us, for this evening's meeting, what I would like to share with you is, is that we have partnered with the public schools to be able to assist with, in five areas. And one of them is children that are chronically truant, children that are habitual school offenders, meaning not being able to comply with school rules, and also children who are constantly running away and/or are sexually exploited. Also, children, students under the, between the ages of six and 16, who are not able to, have not been able to also conform to their parents' rules, home rules, and community rules. We also provide assistance with basic needs. But when we go to the five core areas of a CRA of a child requiring assistance, as you know, Holyoke Public Schools suffers from chronically absent children, and that is what we are trying to assist with, along with children who have difficulty, for various reasons, to be able to conform to the school rules. We have had a relationship with the Holyoke Public Schools even before Dr. Jreich arrived, but we were able to solidify our relationship since his arrival. So what we do is, is that we have a process with the Holyoke Public Schools where if a school counselor is able to identify a student that has been chronically absent, they make a referral, and I've actually provided you with the referral form. This year, we asked the counselors not to just make the referral, but to first meet with the parent, to be able to find out how come their child has not been going to school, because many have many different reasons. And it is for the counselor to decide whether or not it is a excused absent or not, and according to the state, whether, regardless whether the child has a medical excuse or not, it is still considered an absent day from, from school. But the counselors are the ones that call us once they've met with the parent. The parents should be with them when they're making that referral so that we can agree on a time and day when they're going to come. The counselor then moves forward in not only sending the referral to us, but also the discipline record, because the form that you have in front of you is not only a referral, but it is also a release of information, so that the counselor is able to send us whatever documents are important for us to review prior to the parent arriving. From there, we're able to then make a decision with the parent if they want to move forward in getting a assessment by a clinician. We partner, actually, we have a subcontract with River Valley Counseling Center, and their clinicians will do an assessment of the child and the family to see where are the issues, and is it that, do we need to make other referrals as well? That is our process. That is our partnership with the Holyoke Public Schools. And also, I have provided you with this document that also shows you from the time that the referral comes in, the different avenues that it can go through. If it's that the families are suffering from homelessness, or food insecurity, or other issues, we might be able to assist them just strictly with basic needs, right? Making them, providing them with other referrals to other organizations. But if it's something that we see that needs to be remediated in other, in order for the child to be in school and to be ready to learn, we will then put that through a clinical assessment.
Thank you. You're welcome. Any questions for Ms. Lichtenstein? Mr. Collmore?
Welcome back.
Thank you.
We didn't believe you, she.
Thank you.
Last question. You said that...
Unfortunately, this year, and I think that our superintendent can answer that, why don't I leave that to you, sir?
Yeah, for the, sorry, I've lost my voice here, so you're gonna have to bear with me. But for the purposes of, you know, chronic absenteeism, it's an absence no matter what, whether it's excused, unexcused, sick or not, we count it as an abs, it could be a suspension. If a child's out of school for any reason, that counts toward their chronic absentee numbers, and the state is using that as an accountability metric to hold schools accountable, you know, to ensure that kids are coming to school. So it doesn't matter whether it's excused or unexcused.
Thank you.
And that's the, that, when we refer students to Betty, it is for all ki, and it can include, again, excused, unexcused, suspensions, vacations to, away from school, school avoiders. We have that often, that kids don't wanna go to school, they're afraid to go to school, and those will refer to, you know, Betty when it gets to be a high number.
Mr. Burks?
How many, how many students have you had go through the whole, the entire process, gone through the assessments, counseling, and then gotten back to school?
I'm going to apologize, I did not come prepared with those numbers. All of our data is collected through UMass Medical, who the state has obtained to be able to be the one to collect the data. I will share with you, though, Mr. Burks, is that the majority of the parents do not attend to their appointments. We have family support specialists, we have clinicians waiting. Sometimes, we set up a two-and-a-half-hour span for a intake and a clinician to be sitting there, and the majority of the families do not come. They do not. And we report that back to the counselor. We recently did an assessment of how many appointments are parents missing, for the most part, and it's between three to five appointments. So we report that back to the school, because if the child has been out, and according to the Child Requiring Assistance legislation, CRA should not be, a petition should not be filed in court or filed with the Department of Children and families if it's a failure to send. If, the child has to be out eight days per quarter, and we've been looking at that, and so that if a child has been out eight days, and then it gets referred to us, and the family then misses five appointments, we're now into another quarter, and it continues to grow. So I just spoke with some of our partners within the public schools, which is the attendance office, and the Holyoke Public Schools right now has about a 22% chronic absenteeism.
It's a little higher than that.
It's higher? It's higher. So, I mean, just goes to think, you know, if you have 5,000 students, you're talking about, about a quarter of those students are out, chronically absent.
The second part, and I ask because there is a lot of work around social, emotional, and behavioral issues happening now, and they need more supports, I think. So I thank you for the work that you're doing, and I wanted to know if some of the children who had come back to school are actually getting the supports that they need to be successful in school, and if there are recommendations that you might have for the district, or if you see something that may be needed that you don't have now that could help some of those students to stay in school, if it's actually some support that they need to be there, other than what's outside.
You would allow me, I would like to come back probably after your summer session, so that I then can gather all of that information from the files that we submit to UMass, and also to be doing an analysis of the work this year that we've done. I can tell you that last year, especially with the work of the school liaison and the family support specialist, and also the clinicians, families that did come in and did look at the services as a benefit to them, the students did have a better year this year, regardless whether they were in the, if they had IEPs, or 504s, or they were just students that did not find interest in going to school every day. We were able to figure that out with them, go deep with them about what is it that they did have interest in, and regardless whether it was within school or in outside programs, they were able then to have a better attendance this year. This year, we have struggled with getting the families to come in. If they don't come in, we can't do it.
Thank you. Mr. Shan?
Yeah, just, thank you for coming tonight, and just, from what I heard, heard before, I wanna make sure I heard it correctly or inferred what you were saying correctly. You were talking about the, the quarter rule, that it's eight absences a quarter.
Correct.
Were you, it's, what I thought I heard was saying that seems to be a problem, because if you have so many one quarter, and you miss five appointments or three appointments, a new quarter begins, and you kinda have to restart from the beginning. Is that correct? Okay.
Or to file a child requiring assistance either in juvenile court, mostly that's where it is, it's in juvenile court, the child has to be out eight days in a quarter. So on the ninth day, the Holyoke Public Schools is able to go and submit a petition. It is per quarter, the way it's written. What we have done is, is we've been working closely with the attendance officer, and also with Dr. Jreich, that as soon as we're able to get the referral, which means that the school counselor has to get the parent to come in, has to be able to meet with them, it should be no more than three to five days, so that we can figure out ahead of time, why is it that the child is not attending? We sometimes don't get the referrals early enough, and also, like I said earlier, parents then will miss the appointment, miss the appointment, miss the appointment, and then now we're in the, in the next quarter.
Yep. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that properly.
And that was, that's very well written in the first pamphlet that I have handed you from the trial court. It spells it out very clearly there. It's in white. I kept the blue for me.
Oh, the, okay, the pamphlet.
Yes. So it, it goes through step by step as to what happens once a child is out eight days, and also, it goes through the process of what happens when the petition is filed in juvenile court.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Betty, the question that I have is, when the parents, when you have a no-show, how do you follow up with the parents to see how come they didn't show?
Yes. We make calls. We call them. Today, I was on the phones, calling families that didn't show. Some of them had forgotten about their appointment, because last week was our school vacation, and even though we left voicemails, they did not come to the appointment, and then we try to reschedule. But again, if the child is out now five days, or eight days, or maybe it's even gone beyond, and they, we have to reschedule, it's not like I could see them tomorrow. It's not like we have an enormous staff. So it could be two or three more weeks before I could get them back in the door.
Have a counseling service for the parents in case, because there's probably deeper problems than just not showing. So you must have a follow-up, like a counseling service for the parents, because I'm sure they need help.
We do not do the counseling or the therapy in our office. We have clinicians that do the assessment, and if the, and if, and if it is assessed that, whether it's the child, the parent, the child, and the parent, other family members, extended family members that might be in the home that need counseling therapy, the clinician will make that recommendation, and we make the referral. And then we follow up to make sure that they went to that appointment, and if not, then we go back and follow up with the family.
You're welcome. Mayor Morse?
Thank you, Betty, for, for being here and for all the work you're doing down at Enlace. Quick question, just going off of what others have been asking about parents not making the appointments and whatnot. Is there any component of meeting the parents where they're at, knocking on their door, showing up at their home, having the meetings in the living room of the house, rather than the burden being on the family to, to show up?
We have tried that as well. Sometimes, after we've made the phone call saying we would like to go visit you, they're not at home, for whatever reason. We try to do the home visits. We know as a grassroots organization that knocking on the door, face-to-face communication, there's nothing like it. What we've done this year, we just got an expansion grant. It's a little complicated. The state had awarded us August 2017 with a micro family resource center, which is a very, much smaller. The large one sits in Springfield. This year, they awarded us with a full-service family resource center. In the budget this year, I have also included, I'm not gonna say cabin, I'm not gonna say Uber, one of those transportation pieces, to be able to come. So if someone, if we call someone, and let's say that they are living up by Holyoke Community College, and they can't make it down, we're going to offer them to pay for the transportation for them to come. It's important for them to get to us. It's also important for them to see all the services that are available at Enlace. We could explain it to them, but if they don't see it, they don't feel what it's like to be at within the center, they're not going to keep on coming back. So we thought of transportation, we also thought of childcare, and then the whole, from A to Z, kind of different kind of trainings and support groups. We run the grandparents' support group. Tomorrow, the Federation for Children with Special Needs will be at Enlace. They have 108 people signed up. One is gonna be in English, one's gonna be in Spanish. So we're really trying to be very cognizant of who our population is, and making sure that we're making those accommodations.
Thank you. You're welcome. Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Well, Alex asked, asked my question. One of the, my other second part, as you answered the first one, was you send, you said you send your data to the UMass Medical. Do you guys get any response back from them as to, like, what can you do better, or any kind of demographics? Like, can you share that, like, to kinda help support your program?
Yes. There is an end-of-year report, the same report that's given to the Senate, who put together this legislation, and also, this year, for the first time, because this is fairly new, right? From 2012, they're going to be doing a random assessment of families that have served, have been served in each of the resource centers. So that's going to be very telling. I think Mr. Burks asked the question that we have been asking, which are the families that came to us and have gone through their entire service plan? Because after the clinician sees the family, there's a family plan that's presented to them, and given them recommendations, and also some benchmarks to be able to meet, and by certain dates. So we wanna be able to go back and take a look at who really did finish their service plan completely. It's not a treatment plan, it's a service plan. So it could be, your child could benefit from an after-school program, or from a summer program, or, you know, meeting with the guidance, parent to meet with the guidance counselor more frequently. So that's all in a service plan that's introduced to the family at the end of the visit with the clinician. So we're trying to roll that back out and see who really went from A to Z on the service plan, so we could, and then check in with them. Did you meet what, the goals that you had set out? Is your child going to school? Are the issues at home taken care of?
So, and internally, do you guys keep the data too? Like, I'm wondering, like, if middle school, early education, like, elementary, high school, and then the needs of each child, do you guys keep that internally also?
That we do.
Does that get back to the?
It does not. We have not had that kind of exchange. What we've been focusing on is attendance, and trying to go through a process to be able to make sure that the referrals get to us. You have a new director of counseling that we've been working very closely with, and so we're trying to go through that process. If we don't get the referrals in a timely manner, and it could only be done by a guidance counselor, it can't be done by a teacher or a principal, because if this is to be subpoenaed in court, it's the guidance counselor that's gonna have to show. So we wanna be able, we've been trying to really tease out all of the wrinkles in the process of getting those referrals to us, and also, all of the backup information that we need to them.
So what are some of the reasoning why a referral will not get to you in a timely manner? Like, you're talking maybe a month later, right? Like, a month or two? So then you, just like Devin said, then you missed the quarter benchmark. So have you heard, like, what's, what's some of the reasonings, and then how are you ironing that out?
I think that some of them, all, some of the issues is, is the high turnaround that the Holyoke Public Schools has with its counselors. I also think that, and I'm not sure what the job description and the duties are of a, of a guidance counselor. Yesterday, I was looking at a, excuse me, on Friday, I met with my staff. We looked at a case that a child had 39 absences. 39 absences, and it's multiple children in that family. That, to me, is unexcusable, and it, and it's a little bit more complicated. I will be speaking with Dr. Jreich about this particular case in a particular school that already has a very high chronic absenteeism. Why it wasn't done earlier, I don't have an answer. Fortunately, unfortunately, the children have transferred to another school, which is where the guide, that guidance counselor was the one that made the referral. It wasn't where the majority of the absences took place. So there's some tinkering that's going on. Again, I, I think that the director of, of the guidance counselors is doing a remarkable job in trying to get this process in place. It's about process, and it's about being very alert, and I think, what is it, you have school brains? No? School, school, school somebody? School brains? I'm not sure why that isn't utilized more. Today, I called Mr. Robles and Mr. Boe. They immediately were able to print out what the absences are per school. So I'm not sure what the hiccup is within the schools, other than that probably people are very, very busy, but my job is, is to help get the referrals and get them processed as soon as possible. Um, and it, and it's a little bit more complicated. I will be, um, speaking with Dr. Zright about this particular case in a particular school that already has a very high chronic absenteeism. Um, why it wasn't done earlier, I don't have an answer. Um, fortunately, unfortunately, the children have transferred to another school, which is where the guid- that guidance counselor was the one that made the referral. It wasn't where the majority of the absences took place. So there's some tinkering that's going on. Again, I, I think that the director of, um, of the guidance counselors is doing a remarkable job in trying to get this process in place. It's about process, and it's about being very alert. Um, and I think, what is it, you have school brains? No, school, school, school somebody? Um, school brains? I'm not sure why that isn't utilized more. Today, I called Mr. Robles and Mr. Bo. They immediately were able to, um, print out what the absences are per school. Um, so I'm not sure what the hiccup is within the schools other than that probably people are very, very busy. But my job is, is to help, um, get the referrals and get them processed as soon as possible.
Hey, thank you. I know Dr. Zright was just gonna say.
I was, I was just gonna ask you, Betty, a little bit about what the successes and challenges have been. I think that's been the challenge in some of the schools. I think it's by school, we get a lot of referrals from, you know, Betty keeps me up to date on which schools, some schools are over-referring, and then others are not referring enough. Um, but I do, I, I will say, there's been tremendous benefit in having Enlace play this role. When I first arrived, um, the Family Resource Center had just disappeared. It ju- just closed. And then, you know, we, we talked about bringing it back. And then last year, when they started as a mini-center, it was also when we were getting Puerto Rican arrivals. Um, and so Betty was very, um, obviously busy during that time. And so I think this is the first year since I've been here that we're really operating, um, and seeing the ben- benefit and the impact. From my opinion, it's a tremendous impact because there's dialogue back and forth, and there's another, there's places we can send families for additional support, which we didn't have before. So the, the impact could be potentially very significant here. Not to say, and so I just love your perspective about, what do you see has been some of the early wins this school year? And then, you know, you just named one of the challenges. If a school doesn't, and if, not the school, it's the guidance counselor, but the, the school should have systems where they tee it up to the guidance council, who then refers it to in Lase. But other challenges that, uh, that you see, but also some of the successes thus far?
I think that when, again, um, we have, um, some counselors in some schools, um, and not the ones that, um, there are some schools that just refer at the three-day. It's really hard to, um, start questioning a parent about how come you, your child has missed three days in this quarter for different reasons. It could have been the snow, it could have been the flu, it could have been a number of things. Um, but when the appropriate referrals are made to us and we're able, and the family is willing to come in and meet with us and go through a process of assessment, if that's what it calls for, the benefits are amazing. And for us to be, the parents keep on calling us, and then they start coming to the workshops and the support groups, and they say, "This is really working out," and he's excited about going to school, and, "My daughter, I'm still working with her to try to get it, um, through." Um, so those are some of the successes. I think we also have to be cognizant that there's a lot of mental health in this community, and there are children, um, as young as they are, that are really suffering from depression and anxiety, um, and are not able to concentrate. And those are the ones that we really have to hone in on and try to be able to assist them. They're very young, some of them are as young as seven years old, younger. Others are fourteen and seventeen years old. And we have to work with all of them. We want to work with all of them. We want them to be productive citizens, and we want them to continue to live in Holyoke. Um, but it's, it's the amount of, um, of appointments that continue to be canceled. Sometimes they don't even call to cancel, and then we're chasing them. Um, and that makes it difficult, cause it feels almost as if we're forcing them into a process that they're not ready for, for whatever reason that is.
Thank you. Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Betty, I just wanna thank you. Um, I didn't realize how extensive your job was, but thank you so much. My heart is overwhelmed right now to hear what you, all the stuff that you're doing to help the kids. Thank you, sweetheart.
Welcome. I would like to say also, if, with your permission, Madam Chair, is, is that, um, the Vice Chair, excuse me. Oh, Mr. Chair is here. Is, is that, um, this work could not be possible if it wasn't, um, with the, um, with the help of the receivership that we have here. Dr. Zright has been, yeah, well, our existence, a lot has to do with him because when he arrived, the pilot program had, um, been closed. The state did a pilot and they were happy with the result and said, "Thank you very much," and shut us down. Um, it was a real disbenefit, unbenefit, they, this community really lost a lot when, um, the doors closed. And when Dr. Zright came, he said, "I want a family resource center, whether it's in the schools or it's in the community, I need a place to send families." And since then, we have continued to tinker and try to work, um, through it. There's still a lot of work that has got to get done. Um, I'm looking at the statistics today, and it's, I'm not exactly sure how is it that we're going to approach it. But, um, having over a twenty percent chronic absenteeism is something that this community that continues to be in receivership, um, can tolerate. It just can't. So we've got to figure out how to be able to do it. But I think that together as a partnership, we're gonna get there.
And I think it's one of the most significant data points. It's in the other presentation later. It, when you look at why we struggle with outcomes, if you're missing, uh, if we have twenty-five percent of our kids missing more than ten percent of the days, I don't care how good the teaching is, I don't care how sharp the student is, they're not gonna learn. I mean, and so that's a huge data point, which we're a little stuck on. I mean, we've made, if you look, over the last five years, there's been some improvement. It used to be thirty-one, thirty-two, but we're still at twenty-five. That's a quarter of the kids missing, they, um, you know, more than eighteen days of school a year. That's, nobody can learn. So, I mean, having you as a partner to, to attack at this, I think is, is critical because we have struggled to move the needle on that, oh, you know, over time.
I'll take one more step and say that, um, if you would allow me, may I?
Yes, absolutely.
For those that have been out more than those eight days per quarter, my belief is, is, is the child has been done a very, a huge disservice. And I believe that it should just go into juvenile court and have an officer then monitor that case. Cause if the parent isn't coming willingly, someone has to look out for the benefit of the child. It has been written that after the eight days, it should go to a CRA and it should go to court. I am feeling that, especially like the case that I looked at on Friday, where the children have been out thirty-nine days, thirty-nine days. Who's going to advocate for those children? I can't force the parent to come into our office. I can't do it. I can't go to the home and force them for the services that we're offering. We've gotta make choices here, and I'm concerned about a child, multiple children, not receiving an education day in and day out.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Sheen?
Just a, a couple of questions. I think one of them's probably for Dr. Zright. But the, as far as attendance, if a student changes school zones, their attendance travels with them, right?
That's correct.
So if it was seven days in one school, and they go to new school and it becomes eight, the eighth day, it should?
That's correct.
Um, is there, one of the things that you mentioned was the counselors actually having the time, the ability to complete this form with a, a large caseload. And we understand that. Is there a way to get this form into School Brains? So when someone hits a button and is looking at their attendance, they can say, "Complete a..."
Good question.
Uh, CRA referral form, and then it prints out with the information populated, and it just brings it to the parent to say, "Sign it." I mean, if there's some sort of export to cut down?
I think the answer to that is probably yes.
I mean, it might be helpful that then the, whoever is reviewing the attendance also sees, like, is it time for me to initiate this process? And then most of the information, the, the information on the top would be all typed in. I'm, you can read it, you won't have any issues with making sure things are legible. And then you can go from there, and you'll know if you have five forms waiting, you have to do something. I don't know if there's, maybe not right now, but for next year, like it might be?
We have other forms in there already.
Yeah.
Our letters. So it's, yeah, absolutely.
Just to auto-generate. And then what happens if a counselor meets with a student, or meets with a parent and says, "We're referring this out to the CRA," um, and the parent refuses to sign?
We've had many. Some parents say, "I don't want Enlace's assistance."
Okay. And then it's just followed up with a fifty-one A, or is that?
Internally, it stays internally.
We just follow our internal process of number, you know, letter, and then eventually we do. We try, I mean, we don't wanna have to go to file fifty-one A, but we will eventually, based on our attendance policy.
Yeah. Yeah, I just find some of it, I, I mean, some of the guidance we're hearing is there should be, with some of the, especially some of these larger chronic absences, some definite court intervention, we're hearing. But it's also, maybe there's too tight of a, or maybe we're not acting enough that way at times. I, I don't know, I don't wanna send everything to DCF either because that's not an appropriate manner, and they're, I mean, they're of course, we've all read the paper. But I mean, there's just some issues with that. It's, it's difficult. I mean, an eight day is probably, I mean, no one's missing eight. They're probably missing twelve, fourteen, I mean, it's just compounds. I mean, eight is probably, could be done by some students in a three-week period.
Um, Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Um, again, I just wanna thank you again, Betty, cause I know you, how hard you work. Uh, I'm just gonna disagree just a little bit about the, I, you knew I was gonna say that. I disagree about the, you know, having, going straight into the officer. I mean, we talk about the stigma among our population continuously, and that just being, forcing that hand. So like, here we go back to having the community trust us or trust our officers, right? So like, you're going back to that whole stigma, saying like, "Oh, I know you will, I lost my job and I have to be at home," or, you know, "I don't have childcare, I'm working a third shift, I do, I fell asleep." Like, there's so much our families go through and everything else. And I just feel like, at pushing that, again, just is not, it's not beneficial to any of our population and also beneficial to the officers in themselves. Um, I just have a question because it keeps on going back to like, I feel like it goes back to like, how, what do we do? And so like, how do we do more of an outreach, or how do we support you so that we can get that kind of outcome for you? Um, and I know that there's so many other nonprofits, you know, with One Holyoke No Esperanza, uh, Nuestra Crayces, and so many other things that maybe we do come up with a game plan, um, in regards to supporting you and supporting our students. But I just wanted to give my opinion on that.
And I would just, I would also add that, that, to your point, I mean, we do have a monthly attendance coalition that Jose leads, and there are organizations that sit at the table. We meet DCFs there, we have, but, um, we also have Enlace's there. We have, um, uh, I think Nueva might send some, we have different organizations that send people there. And the idea is to try to brainstorm different ideas. Because this is, I don't wanna be, punitive doesn't work always. It's also about building relationships with folks. And if it's not, the, the schools, it's also with their pediatricians. We're working with the pediatricians right now, uh, trying to help, you know, them understand the, the challenges around chronic absenteeism. We're working with the homeless shelters because a high number of our, um, chronic kids are homeless. No surprise there, right? So Jose and Jennifer Gonzalez have been to the shelters, talking to the shelters about working with families. We, we, it's gotta be a multi-pronged approach. I'd love for any school committee member to come to the monthly attendance coalition meetings. They're, um, Fri- they're usually the, they were last, it was last?
It's the second Friday of every month.
Yes, so it was two, two Fri- it was not last Friday, Friday before. But, um, and we have, schools present their data and get feedback. Um, and it's meant to be collaborative. And I think we know that chronic absenteeism is not just a Holyoke Public Schools issue. It's a community issue. Um, and we need the help of orgi- so I hope you, you know, I'll make sure you get invited. When you see Jose next time?
Yeah, I'll let him know.
Make sure.
I'll send an email.
If I may respond to your comment, I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, the last thing that we wanna do was, is one, is be, um, filing, um, and it's actually the school department, not us, um, the only ones that could file a CRA for, um, chronic school, um, absenteeism. The issue here is, is, is that if the guidance counselor has not built a relationship with that family or anyone in the school, I mean, I, I had kids in the Holyoke Public Schools, and they, their, their connection was with the custodian or with the lunchroom lady, or, right? I mean, kids connect with everyone that's within that building. But there's always that one person. And so if there is no one that is connecting with that child and no one is noticing that that child is out as many days as some of the kids are, um, it's really the guidance counselor that has to build that relationship. If the relationship is not built within the school, the parent isn't going to come to us, unless they themselves make a referral. And we've had many families, actually, those are probably our most successful cases, when the parent is the one that looks for services for a different kind of reasons, um, usually not chronic absenteeism. My concern is, is the child, who's advocating for that child? Um, and if the child isn't going to school and no one in the school is taking notice, then we really have, we're gonna have a real big issue, um, as years come in, and the dropout rate, um, will go on the rise again after all of the effort that all of you have made to be able to lower that rate. So it's not my intent, but there's some times, just gotta be able to push that button. And the other reality is, is that just because it gets referred, doesn't mean that it's going to be an open case. The same thing goes for DCF. If they are to make the referral and it's in your packet, we're called an informal referral. If it gets referred to us and the parent does, um, start sending the child to school or starts identifying needs that they have, it does not get opened. Um, so there is a kind of stop gate, um, before it moves. If the parent then doesn't comply, then it, and it should, and it should be, somebody should be looking at it.
Betty?
I thank you very much.
Ms. Tensley-Williams?
Um, I don't wanna be redundant, and, um, Dr. Z answered some of my questions. Um, when you have no-shows, um, maybe the people are homeless. Do you have a lot of situations where, when they don't show up, that they are homeless?
That is not, that is not the population that's usually a no-show. Different, yeah. Or they're not being referred to us, um, but the population that we're serving actually have permanent addresses.
Very concerned about homeless.
Absolutely, as we should be.
Mr. Burks?
Oh, I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, you're all set? Any other question? I do.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Well, I have a question, one moment, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, um, I've been here sitting very quietly. Um, yes, you are right. Um, many of the students that are missing, um, school a lot, are suffering with mental health disabilities and are, and are having difficulties when they are going to school. And parents are being called to come up, come and pick up their children. So a lot of us parents, once a child is already starting and is already escalating, we already know that if we drop them off, we're gonna be called in five minutes to go pick up them up again. So in that case, my huge concern is students that are suffering with mental health, which I wish we would have had kind of like a, a data collection of knowing who exactly is being referred to you. Is it a, a student that is not suffering from any mental health? Is, you know, a straight-A student just decides that now they're not going to school? Um, because if that is the case, then it's something that we need to look at as, what is it that we aren't doing? Everybody keeps talking about social-emotional learning, but yet we've, we fail to understand what that really means. So we're really not executing it appropriately. And it's not just in the Holyoke Public Schools, it's across the United States. Um, it's just a famous word that everybody is jumping on and wants to sell products on how to make social-emotional learning great and improve mental health. And, and it's not that. A lot of it has to do with basic common sense of empathy and how we address and how we talk to the student. So if we continue to do, I'm just concerned that it's gonna be an increase to the school-to-prison pipeline, cause if you look at the students, or, I'm sorry, if you look at the inmates, and especially in Ludlow, it's males, obviously, Latinos, and a lot of them are suffering from mental health. Along the way, we failed. Not just us, the parents did fail, but in the sense because they did not know. So we're really not educating. We do a lot of, um, activities in the schools for parents to learn how to do math, right, to help the, the child. Um, bingo nights. I think we really need to start focusing and looking at educating families. Like, are you having a child with, um, disruptive behaviors? And you really wanna know how you can help him. Um, is your child suffering from depression? These are kind of like the signs. Um, date rape, this is what it looks like. Educating families so that parents know what they're looking for, what signs, what symptoms, and then what are the resources that are out there? Cause it's not just DCF. DCF cannot help a child with mental health. But yet we fail to tell them that there's DMH, the Department of Mental Health. They may not be getting a lot of money, and money keeps being pulled from them because it's going to CBHI. The CBHI only focuses on kids with mass health. We have kids on private insurance, and private insurers do not wanna pay for in-home therapy, do not wanna pay for in-home behavioral therapy. So it's that DMH portion where then you have, um, agencies that are DMH-funded, like, um, Western Mass Training Consortium, you have the Support Network, that they have family support specialists that work with the families that have children suffering from mental health. And, I mean, being that Mental Health Awareness Month is coming up, I mean, we really need to start focusing and looking at what really is social-emotional learning and how we can help these students. Cause I don't think we should be penalizing them. Cause I don't think we should be penalizing them. Um, if they are suffering from a debilitating illness, because it is debilitating. It's just as if it's, if it's a child suffering from a different type of illness, you know, I hate to, to. To compare them, but if you're suffering from cancer and you're going through pain and the child's at home. Are we gonna penalize them and send a CRA? Because now they're at home or they're going through chemo treatment. But we will send it if it's a kid that's suffering from mental health, that's having a difficult time getting out of bed, anxiety. Now I have stomach pains, vomiting, and in reality, it's the anxiety that's causing that. But yet we're quick to send that CRA. That's just my opinion.
I could share with you that the majority of the assessments um, that the clinicians have been able to do. Um, and we recently changed from Behavioral Health Network to River Valley. Um, and I think that it's gonna come with a lot of benefits, given that you have already um, River Valley within your schools. Um, and I think that they're gonna be able to track a lot of our children, not only while they come to the office, but then also when, while they're in school. Making sure that they um, are being successful. Um, there are many children, you are absolutely correct, that have gone through trauma. Um, who are suffering from PTSD, who are suffering from a variety of different issues. Um, and the parents, um, unfortunately, um, for one reason or another, have not been able to follow up and connect them. Um, to the proper supports that there are. This community has a lot of support. And all different, I'm probably one of the smallest communities that has the most supports in the entire um, Commonwealth. And so short of resources, we are not. It's a matter of making, being able to make that connection. If they come to us, we will be able to make those connections. If those connections don't work, we're gonna find other connections. The thing is, is being able to get them and to also, to be able to keep them grounded. We make appointments all the time for um, mental health organizations and they might go once and then they don't go again. What we want to do is, is be able to get them to come back to us and we'll find someone else. Not every therapist is made for every child or for every individual or counselor. So sometimes it's a, it's a test, did it work? Okay, come back, we'll test it again. It's just like medicine, right? Medicine, they give you something, it doesn't work, you go back, you get something else, um, until you finally find that right fit. Um, it's about the follow-up and, and we need the parents and although the parents, they themselves have gone through a lot. And have suffered all different kind of crises, um, and bad situations in their life. They're the only ones that are responsible for their children. And if they don't do the follow-up. Then I think that's when we, as a community, have to come into play and um, take certain steps. Does that make sense to you?
The only thing, so in respect to therapy, uh, is one of the saddest things is that when you look at children's mental health. There's a lack of therapists, there's a lack of psychiatrists, and the consistency of treatment is not there. The child may have a therapist that they developed a bond with and for five months, the next month, it's automatically cut off and they're on a waiting list. And when they get picked back again, it's telling that whole story again. And it's just that frustration piece. That families and the, the child themselves has because they make that bond in, in mental health. That you find that, that person, that trust, and when you break it, it's gone. Starting from scale one, square one.
Trust again. I agree.
Ms. Tensley Williams and then.
This could be to Dr. Z or the mayor. Um, what would be wrong with if a kid, if a child is home and they are very sick and they do have cancer? What's wrong with sending tutors into the home to, to be there to teach them because they are losing out? But if there's home and they're sick, tutors should maybe be able to go into that house and teach those kids.
Yeah, we do do that right now. If a child's uh, homebound because of an illness, we do send tutors to the house.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Betty, for everything. Thank you for the partnership that you have with the Holyoke Public Schools. Any other questions? Nope. Thank you again. Moving on to student data.
Uh, we're gonna actually go, we're gonna do a quick budget review. Anthony's gonna present information about um. An overview and a forecast of the two thousand twenty, believe it or not, um. Budget, um, as we're beginning to prepare for um, the upcoming budget season.
Hello, everyone. Uh, so as, as Doctors Wright mentioned, we just wanted to really at, at this meeting, give you a um. A high level overview of the governor's budget proposal. And how that impacted us and what our budget development process is going forward. So one thing I will say that um, I've been working in school finance for about thirteen years. And this upcoming year, uh, or this governor's budget is the first time I actually see anything. Being done about the Chapter Seventy Foundation Budget Formula. So um, it's very promising, you know, in, in terms of hopefully. This initial investment that we seen by the governor and that we're seeing in the House. Um, is supposed to be a one, uh, a, a, a change in the formula that's gonna be implemented over a seven-year period. So if this is year one of seven years of changes, then things are starting to look really good for. On the revenue side for, for Holyoke Public Schools. Um, based on our demographic and based on some of the changes that were implemented into the formula this year. So with flat revenue, uh, or with flat enrollment. We ended up seeing an additional four million dollars to our required net school spending, which. Represents about five percent over the prior year. Normally, when we come to you around this time of year, we're seeing. An increase of a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and seventy-two thousand, even with flat enrollment. So like I said, this is a, a very much on, a, a, a light at the end of the tunnel. We've been talking about Chapter Seventy reform for a long time and we're finally starting to see it. We're not seeing it as quickly as we would like, but we're seeing glimpses of it. Um, overall, foundation enrollment was flat in the district, but uh, in, in district, we did see a decline of fifty-two students. Our charter reimbursement decreased by about thirty percent or five hundred and eighty-six thousand. And one of the biggest challenges that we're going to be facing this upcoming year is. If you remember correctly, when we presented the balance budget last year, we used uh, almost about three million dollars of one-time funding. To basically avoid having the cut and we did that strategically. You know, hoping that something was gonna be done with Chapter Seventy. So um, normally if, you know, if we had addressed the structural deficit that we had last year. This four million dollar increase would have went a long way, but uh, we, we have to first solve for the fact that. You know, that one-time revenue source that we, we lost, or we're losing for next year. So on the expense side, we did early projections, um, and we took what our salary projections were for this year. And we stepped everybody up, um, assuming flat, you know, assuming we keep the same number of staff that we have. Um, and we saw that expenses were gonna be increasing or salaries were gonna be increasing by two point three million dollars. Um, over, overall, we generally, we just did a, a slight increase of three percent for supplies and services. The majority of those ser- services are, are services that we provide to our special ed students, so contracts that we have. Um, and then health insurance, we were uh, looking at a very, very, very uh, large increase. Um, initially, the, the first time we, we sat down and looked at what health insurance costs were gonna be. We uh, initially got a twenty-two percent increase, um, for this budget. We have built in a fifteen percent increase. Uh, there's still a lot of work that we need to do in working with Section Nineteen and working with our insurance broker. To hopefully get that number down. But right now, what we have in our number, buil- built into our numbers is a fifteen percent increase over the. Um, current year, which is about seven hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, out-of-district tuition is going up on the general fund by one point seven million. And that's just um, part of our strategy every year is where we try to, in order to avoid deep cuts. We try to make sure we take advantage of every revolving account that we have, every grant funding source that we have. And in the past couple of years, we've been able to uh, carry over a significant amount of circuit breaker. They allow you, every circuit breaker allocation that you get, you're allowed to spend it over a twenty-four month period. So um, at the end of the year, if we're tracking, trending a surplus. We've uh, benefited from carrying over a lot of circuit breaker to offset some of our out-of-district tuition costs, but we've exhausted. Those revolving accounts and right now, we're, we're projecting that there's not gonna be any carryover in our circuit breaker account. Um, our charter assess- and school choice assessment um, have increased by three point six percent. Or five hundred and forty-four thousand. And initially, we built in, you know, uh, we, we have this turnaround grant. And sl- little by little, the state is expecting us to wean off of this money. Um, so early on, we projected a five hundred thousand dollar. Um, increase to expenses that would have to be absorbed onto the general fund, should this uh, turnaround fund get. Uh, get cut or um, any other funding sources that we may have, costs that we need to absorb on the operating budget. So this next slide just summarizes everything that we just talked about on one page. And initially, when the governor released his budget, we were looking at a five point two million dollar deficit. Based on all of those assumptions that we just talked about. Um, I will say that the, the House released their budget last week. And we stood to benefit by about four hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. That's not in these numbers. In addition to that, we've gone through the staff allocation process and we've met with chiefs. So we've gotten this number down to about three point seven million dollars. You know, some of that is just due to enrollment decreases in certain schools and we, one thing that we did not do. And we don't plan on doing is touching class sizes. So we want to make sure that we stick to the class sizes that we've had for the pla- past few years. We did not uh, touch the per pupil amounts that we, the discretionary funding that we give schools. We did not touch that. So we're going through the budget development process right now. Um. And I, I can, I guess this is a good segue into what our strategy is. Uh, we recognize that the scope of this challenge may require reductions in resources. We are challenged to be creative and service and delivery models. We recognize that all members of our community must partner with us in order to be successful. Um, you know, and Lasse being one of them. You know, I just got word today that one of our partners is gonna be giving us a thirty-five thousand dollar grant. To provide professional development to uh, teachers a- at the PEC school. Uh, so we, in short, we really can't do this alone. We're gonna need partners and uh, to get through these tough times. And as far as future budgets, you know, the district right now has a structural deficit, but I will say that on the revenue side, things. Look pretty good. We're just still, still struggling with increases in our charter assessments, increases in out-of-district tuition. Increases in our health insurance costs that um, continue to outpace our revenue growth. So um, this little graphic just shows that, you know, we, we need to find the right balance between. Student achievement, operational efficiencies and financial savings. We can't, you know, as much as we would love to do for a district that's funded at the net school spending requirement. We can't just con- uh, dump all of our funding and focus. And do everything we want to do to hit uh, student achievement because we just don't have the resources. So we would be high up on that, on that circle there and, and we also don't want to. Put all our energy into operational efficiencies and financial savings and make this all about cost, 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 cost. Because then student achievement is gonna suffer. We really need to find that balance right in the middle where we get a good balance of. Making progress and student achievement with a, a, with, with financial savings and operational efficiencies. Holyoke, um, as I mentioned, is a district that's, that's heavily reliant on, on Chapter Seventy funding. Uh, we get about eighty-seven percent of our budget comes from, through Chapter Seventy. And only thirteen percent or so comes from local, local taxes. So we're, unlike other communities, I mean, I'm, I'm sure you know some of your colleagues in other communities, they, they probably have a balanced budget already. And sometimes it, they pass their budget in December and they're, they're already done. Cause they don't really care what happens at the state level. They're, they're not relying on that funding. They build their budget, they have the tax base and they can do that. Holyoke's very different. We rely one hundred percent. I mean, we can see that. From the governor's budget to the House's budget, that impacted us by four hundred and twenty-one thousand, so. We're, we're really monitoring this process really closely and this, this uh, timeline just gives you an idea. As to uh, what, what to expect for the next couple of months before we get this final, final budget passed. So right now, we're, we just completed the uh, step three. The House released their budget and we finally got some numbers last week, updated cherry sheets. Um, and right now, it, it's moving to the Senate Ways and Means Committee. Um, and then the Senate will, will pass their budget proposal forward in late May. Conference Committee will look at it and they usually end up uh, submitting theirs right around June thirtieth. And then when that happens, the governor has the opportunity to veto any changes. Um, and then in order to get an override to any ve- vetoes, the, you have to get a two-thirds vote. And then usually right around July one is when we know one hundred percent. You know, what we're gonna, what we're looking at, especially on the revenue side for budget. So we'll continue to monitor that. Where we're at in the budget development process is that chiefs were asked to submit. Uh, budget reductions of ten percent. So we've gone through at least one round for every single chief. Uh, some chiefs, we've gone through two rounds because we need to clarify in questions. We've also asked, um, we've had individual budget hearings with the superintendent. And in fact, this week alone, we started to bring in school principals. Who uh, are developing their budgets for next year and letting us know what the impact is to them. Um, we're gonna continue to analyze budget requests. As I mentioned before, the, from the five point two, we're at about three point seven. And we're really looking at an all-funds approach this year. Um, one of the things that I will update you on is we anticipated getting about two million dollars in Puerto Rico money. In federal relief and, and state relief because of the hurricane. And we ended up getting four million. So part of that three point seven million dollars, you know, our strategy is gonna be pretty consistent to what. We did last year is if there's other funding sources that we could use right now to get us through another year. You know, you, you hear me say kick the can down the road. Well, um. We wanna, you know, our strategy is gonna be to do that. We, Dr. Jreich is one hundred percent committed. I mean, he tells me. We're not cutting, we're, you know, we, we can't cut the schools. I don't want the schools, I don't want to touch class sizes. I don't want to cut anything from their per pupil. So in order to do that, we need to, you know, we're gonna have to. And hopefully, like I said, things will get better. You know, we're, we're really hopeful that if this year is any indication. Of um, them fixing Chapter Seventy, we, we stand to benefit if, from it greatly. And we, we just need another year to see what that's gonna look like. Uh, we did put together a, a super, a, a budget advisory committee. So we have uh, members of the union, we have members of my team, we have uh, Mr. Brunel, who is, who represents the school committee. And um, we also have a representative from the city council. And the goal is just to get um, information just like this. To uh, a group of people and, and constituents that, you know, understand the challenges that we face. And maybe can help us think through some things that we're not thinking through. You know, we're hoping that that committee comes with a recommendation to Doctors Wright. In some areas, we may want to look into whether that be, you know, revenue uh, generating opportunities or cost reduction opportunities. We really want to make it an involved process so that we have representatives from um, really key stakeholders in the process. Um. So we're gonna continue to vet all the level service budgets that we receive from chiefs and continue to meet with. Uh, principals as well, uh, anything, you know, anything that we see that's double counted or. Or um, in, in error or um, maybe a updated projections, like for example, health insurance. You know, as we go through the negotiation process, we get a better picture as we get closer to the end of the year of what that increase is gonna be like. Um, it doesn't necessarily have to stay at fifteen percent and we're, we're committed to making sure that um, we do everything we can. Especially with those big accounts to get those numbers down so that um, you know, we don't, we could avoid cuts. Anybody have any questions?
Alrighty, here we go. Uh, Rosalie. I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
And what does it come under? On this revenue sheet?
Section, so Section Nineteen is uh. We, we have to sit down with Section Nineteen every year to go through. Um, and either rebid our health insurance, but it's really made up of a lot of union representation. So when we have to look at plan design and look at what the impact on the individual employees are. So when we have to look at plan design and look at what the impact on the individual employees are gonna be. Um, I don't know how this body originated. I'm not sure if the mayor can speak to that more.
Yeah, so years ago, um, mayors and superintendents had to individually bargain with every collective bargaining unit separately. Around health insurance plans and then before my time, the city council adopted a state law that creates a section nineteen committee, which. All of the major collective bargaining units in the city now send one representative to the section nineteen committee and their votes are weighted as well. So public school employees and unions oftentimes have a big share of the votes because they have the most employees in their union, most, most members in the health insurance. So schools, police, fire, clerks, uh fourteen fifty nine, DPW, um. All have representatives at this, at this table. And then when we negotiate with our brokers and health insurance companies, and we bid, health insurance companies will come back to us on their renewal proposals. And then we negotiate with the section nineteen committee, uh, changes, splits to percentage of the employees paying, percentage of the cities paying. Um, and things like that. So in order for us to accept the health insurance proposal, it has to have a positive vote from the section nineteen committee. So we can't just unilaterally say, hey, we're going with, going with Cigna and these are the plan designs and this is the split. We have to have a majority of the, the committee vote in favor. So it's not a unilateral management, top down approach to it.
Thank you. Any other questions? For Mister Soto, Mister Collmore?
I don't see anything in there. I've been wanting to know. Is there any way we can build up a capital outlay program so that, you know? We don't have to go through this every time we have a crisis or something like this. We have to go to the city council and say, hey, we need extra money or something like this. Or ma- maintenance or or whatever we need to do.
Yeah, we, I I will say that we do a ton of regular maintenance on our own. Um, and it's built into our operating budget. We do a lot to maintain these older facilities. But we are what's called a fiscally dependent community uh uh in the, in the state. And what that means is that we're not allowed to, you know, we're funded right at the minimum level, uh, minimum spending. Minimum net school spending requirement. And as part of that, we're not allowed to, uh. You know, there's three things that don't count towards net school spending. One of them is transportation, the other one's adult ed. Another one's leases. Sorry, there's four that really apply to us. And then the fourth one is any capital projects that are greater than two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So um. Other communities that are well above that, they can, they can certainly do that because it's above the minimum required. But we're not, and we're also not allowed to issue our own debt because we're fiscally dependent. Um, so in short, it's, it's just not allowed because we're a fiscally dependent. Community and and capital projects is just not something that counts towards net school spending.
Thank you, Mister Krishane.
Um, the, thank you for that report, by the way. It's very thorough and uh. Appreciate it, all the work that you do, Anthony. Um, the fifty two students, do you know where we lost the students? Are, is there any particular school level, like is high school, grade school? Do you have any idea?
Mainly in the uh, in the upper grades. I don't have a, I did, I do have a breakdown back at my office. Um, I do know that our, our school choice numbers are up. So they're, they're, I I don't, I don't have a number, so that is something that I can. When I get back to my office, I can definitely send that to you. If if you'd like, I could send it to the.
The other thing, uh, now, uh, Mister Krishane is we lost um, uh, a number of students. Uh, this October, one rolls to the Hamden Charter School that opened. Um, and so I think we had right there about forty students that left. Um, for this current school year. Um, and I would say that the bulk of that, I mean, that's where I would, the majority of that change and that's grades, um. I think they're six to nine is what the new school opened as um in West Springfield.
What, what is that? Rough numbers? What, what does that equate to like dollars? Fifty two times what?
About thirteen thousand eight hundred if you wanna just use averages. You know, when you factor in um, all the different pieces in the chapter seventy formula. Um, you know, economically disadvantaged, special ed, yellow, whether they're middle school or high school. When all that's factored in, the average is about thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars per student.
Oh, sorry. Any other questions? Mister Sheen?
Are we anticipating or do we already know what we uh, what we might be getting back with the uh, social justice charter school? Our students.
Uh, we actually got a city council um, request for that information.
In an order?
Yes, it was called an order.
I think they like to call it an order.
An order, um, just to use the technical term. Yeah, thank you. Um, so we've talked about that. We don't know, other than we sent a letter to every parent. At um, Holyoke resident that goes there, um, requesting, you know, um, giving them. A name and number they could contact about coming back. So we don't know for sure. I think um, you know, they are moving to Chickaby, as you know, um, and so I would expect. I mean, we, we, we were anticipating like, you know, thirty to fifty students coming back.
And and we, I will say, um. How many there, how many there are there right now that live in Holyoke is about a hundred and thirty one.
Right.
Students. So I looked at that today. So um, our response to the city council's order is like. We can tell you how, how many per student we would be getting, but we can't predict how many of them are gonna choose to come. If it were ten, then it's a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. If it were twenty, then it would be double that. So we'll, we'll, we'll let them know how, if, if, how, if a certain amount come back, how much that is. But there's no way to predict which ones are gonna choose to stay in Holyoke or transfer to Holyoke Public Schools.
Yeah, I, and I just wanna say, I'm hoping that, I mean, I know there's a million things going on right now with student enrollment and getting things ready. But that we try to be a little bit more proactive. I just don't want on June thirtieth that the school. In their moving transition can access records, can, I mean, it, it could be really difficult when these students are enrolling if they don't actually have records coming in. Uh, if there's a delay because a new school's opening up and whatever can happen. I mean, just the availability of that, that I don't know if there's more. Of a way to get students to enroll if they're gonna stay or no, whatever the commitment's gonna be. I'm sure the school wants to know, the charter school wants to know as well. But just whatever we can do to kinda make that a smooth transition because I'm just, I'm guessing not all hundred and thirty or whatever students are going to. Choose to go to Chickaby. And whatever, what was their main feeder? Us or the other?
Oh, definitely us, definitely us, yeah. No, much more us than the other charter.
So di- do we know who was accepted yet into them for ninth grade from the district?
Uh, we do not know that. No, we know the list of kids who are currently enrolled.
Weren't those already due though? I thought lotteries had to be done.
Yeah, we, I mean, they, they had to be done. We don't, we, the school district doesn't have that info, like we, the Holyoke Public Schools doesn't have that.
They don't have to report that to us?
Um, that's a good question. I think we would have to request that from them. And we, we, we have some sense of like which kids are telling, uh, telling their counselors that they're going.
Yeah.
But that doesn't always mean that that's where they're actually gonna go. I mean, we could check, we, I can look into whether we can request that information from them now.
Yeah, I would hope that maybe we could just to see what eighth grade to ninth grade enrollment looks like. With them to see what we're gonna be impacted by because that, I mean, all of this could change a lot of numbers.
Right.
For um, Holyoke High if they get an influx of eighth graders or whatever it may be. So just whatever. That is to see if it's gonna be a lower number.
Right.
Because I'm guessing that the cherry sheets just predicting an average of charter school students that are going there, but a school clo- a school moving. Could have a big difference on it.
Yep.
Yeah, can I also mention one thing? It's a little off topic, but I, I definitely wanted, before I forget, to celebrate that. Uh, today we started breakfast in the classroom at the Holyoke High North Campus. Um, Holyoke High North was one of the districts, one of the schools. One of the only schools that had uh just a very, very low participation rate. We were at ten percent for breakfast participation. At Holyoke High and overnight, um, we, we more than doubled the participation rate. So four hundred and sixty seven Holyoke High students had breakfast today. Um, and we're, our, our goal is to get to about eighty percent. Uh, we're far away from that, but you know, with, with some improvements in, in menu offerings next year, especially at that program. We, we started a, a s- smaller program this year at, at Holyoke High School, which is a cold menu. Um, just to make sure we get everything operational and then when the kids come back next year. For the beginning of the school year, we'll, we'll be implementing hot breakfasts back into Holyoke High North. And we're hoping that that drives up the participation rate. We'll say at Dean, at the Dean Campus, they're over eighty percent. So when you compare both high schools, uh, eighty per, over eighty percent of the kids at, at the Dean Campus were eating breakfast. And only ten percent at Holyoke High North were eating breakfast. So um, we're really proud to have rolled that out. We're one of the first, one of, not the first, because uh, Central High School in Springfield was one of the first. But there's not a lot of people that do breakfast in the classroom at the high schools. So we um, definitely on a short list. And um. So the other, I did have one more thing, I'm sorry. So the other thing is the window projects uh have started at Kelly School. So over the, the break, we started um, replacing some of the windows at Kelly School. So that's a, you know, thank you to the mayor and the city council for approving that, uh, that MSBA project. And funding their portion. So we're gonna be getting new windows and doors at uh Morgan Sullivan and Kelly and that work has already begun at Kelly.
Thank you, Mister Krishane.
Um, I, I was um, thinking about uh, some of the, over the couple of summers ago, having. Meetings with families and maybe if we could target where these students, the neighborhoods of these students that we might potentially. Uh, pull in, back into the district. Maybe we could get some volunteers uh from the school committee. I would volunteer just to. See if we could get some neighborhood meetings uh hosted at different families' homes. Uh, to try to uh find out what, what they're looking for and see what we can do, you know, vis a vis, you know, programming. To try to bring these uh, these students back. It's just the numbers are, it adds up really quick, you know, uh, closing some gaps. Uh, is, just try to get, you know, more students in. I mean, maybe. Most of the schools, that would be very beneficial, I think.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I mean, I'm always game for that and I'm, I mean, I'd leave it up to your colleagues to see if they'd be interested in uh, in their wards. You know, specific wards about doing that. I mean, and we can also get, we can look at the maps too and determine where we lose the most choice kids. We have all the addresses.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, of kids that choice out. But the real money is in the kids that, I mean, at that, we care about all the kids coming back. But the kids we lose to charter are thirteen thousand. Student, you know, on average.
Any other questions?
I have a comment. Um, I'll do a backyard picnic for that.
A what?
I'll do a backyard picnic.
Okay.
I'm with you, brother.
That'll be great. So really quick, um, I know that we do have the public hearing for the budget fiscal year twenty on June seventeenth. Um, at five thirty here, so um, that's one thing. I just have two real quick ones. Um, if you go back to page three, you talked about the services, the increase in supplies and services. Um, you had mentioned it was special ed, education services. So are we talking like PTO, TST services?
Some of those, uh, speech, language, um. You know, uh, there's some services that are required to some of the kids that are out of district as well, that we end up paying separately from their tuition. Um, you know, we, we partner with uh Center School and school-based services to provide some. Therapeutic intervention services to some of our kids in district. Uh, the, that's the majority of, you know, our supplies and services is in that budget.
And I have a question. So we pay from the budget, right? But services like PTO, TST, the city charges their Medicaid, correct, and receives that money back? And the city keeps it into their, their general fund?
Yeah, they build it into their revenue. Um, but they also pay for what we. So that, on top of our net school spending number, they give us the funding that we pay Lower Pioneer Valley to do that work. So we end up contracting with Lower Pioneer Valley to, to help us with that Medicaid reimbursement process. The city does give us the money upfront in our appropriation and then the revenue does go directly to the city. Yes.
Okay. So they keep the revenue. Obviously, they're gonna pay for the, for the Medicaid reimbursement, the people who are doing that.
Yeah, they pay for the contracted services.
Okay.
And then they get the revenue. I, I think it's, I don't, I'm not sure what the amount is. I think it's around one point two million.
Is that about how much we spend um, in, in the services or a little bit more?
Oh, we spend a lot more.
Lot more. Oh, okay. And that comes out of our budget.
Yes.
Okay. The next question was on the out of school, out of district tuition. I'm curious. We um, collaborate with Center School, correct? That's out of district. Why don't we have our own? Because I'm assume, my assumption is, is that the majority of out of district placement has to do with mental health, correct?
Uh, I don't know that.
Yeah, I don't know offhand and not, the majority is not at center. I mean, I think.
No, not at center, but the majority of your out of district placement.
Or mental health.
Is mental health. So more therapeutic intervention programs.
Um, it really depends on, on the need. I mean, we have. You know, there's, there's some services that we just can't provide. For example, Willie Ross, I use Willie Ross School for the. Um, I don't know if it's blind or deaf, I'm sorry. School for the deaf. We don't provide those services in-house, so we have to contract out. There's some students that require residential pla- placements based on. Um, and we don't, you know, there's just some services that we can't. A large part of, some of what we're, a large part of what we do. Send out of district is for um, therapeutic intervention and, you know, behavior. But it's, when it's, we can't, I, I guess Steve would probably be.
Come back with uh, the special ed department to break it down for you so you would be able to see. I mean, right now, we have uh, a very high percentage of kids out of district for a district our size. Size two percent of our population is out of district when the state average is one percent.
Cause I was just wondering, why don't we open up our own? And yes, it would still be considered out of district, even though it's within your own district, but.
Well, it wouldn't be out of district, it would be an in-district program.
An in-district, but it would be a separate.
Yeah, I mean.
Day school, correct?
A public.
A public day school. And then we can actually take others from other cities, correct? Into your public day stu- school.
We're talking about doing that with, potentially with the transitions program because it's a, been a highly successful program. To invite other students to come in from other districts that maybe don't have. Um, and that's also a revenue generator for the city Holyoke too, especially in, in that case, we, I think we're running a, a stronger program. Which would might attract um, students from the outside.
That's all I had.
But that's, those are good questions. I mean, we, i- it is a huge strain on our budget. Huge.
Any other question, Mister Sheen?
So what are, are we, have we started putting into place for the new um, mass health Medicaid expansion? Partial payment program? Have we started sending out forms just to get parents to sign off, just saying? You consent to bill mass health, this won't affect your kids eligibility requirements, but we can do partial payment regarding IEPs and specialized plans?
I don't know the answer to that, but my guess is no.
Okay. July first, I mean, we can bill more against that if we have parental consent. I mean, it's, it's something that. We should definitely look into. I know it allows it for some specialized plans and IEPs, but it's, the regulations change to allow. And it does not impact a student's eligibility or anything dealing with mass health that they may receive. It simply allows for, I, probably some supplement to what we get out of Medicaid reimbursement, but it's, I mean. It's something that we would probably wanna get started. Before the end of the school year, so students are ready to go on September one with cer-. With billing for services because I'm assuming you can't actually bill and record until you have the signed consent form.
I, I can follow up with the vendor that helps us with that.
Yeah, and I don't know if they even, do they bill to mass health or just federally to Medicaid?
I can ask.
Yeah, cause we may need to.
And if I'm not mistaken, you can always bill ma- mass health three months back for services.
Yeah, I don't know. I just know that it was expanded and July first is the start of the, the eligibility period.
Any other questions, Miss Williams?
I'm gonna make this all quick.
I'm gonna make this all quick. There's a problem. They were saying that we were having a racism in Holyoke Public Schools. Um, says most importantly, our equity team efforts to examine structural racism in Holyoke Public Schools. Um, who heads up that team and how much progress have they made as far as racism in the Holyoke Public School system?
Well, Jose Bo is the, uh, is the one who heads up that work and, uh, Mr. Brooks is part of that team. Uh, that meets, um, monthly. Mariani is part of the work as a student, uh, on the student advisory group. Um, and the folks that facilitated the school committee retreat, uh, they are, um, we work with them around that, um, around our equity work. Um, and there is a meeting, a public meeting on Thursday where they're going to screen the, uh, movie Seeing Red, which is about the school to prison pipeline. So I, this was a good opportunity to plug at In Lasse, Thursday at, I think it said, what time is it? Say there, six o'clock?
Six, five, five thirty?
Five thirty to seven, maybe on Thursday evening.
In Lasse, at In Lasse?
At In Lasse, yep.
The Jose, Jose, what's his last name?
Uh, Jose Bo, B O U.
Thank you.
Okay. Just gonna double check real quick. So whoever does want to attend, uh, five P M.
Yep.
Five P M.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? No questions? All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Soto for everything.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
Um. Okay. So I'm just gonna quickly go through, um, since my voice is strained.
Yes.
Um, yep. Um. As we're putting up the other. Oh, Mike, thank you. So I just, the two pieces of data you need or information is, there's a one-page spreadsheet with our, um, data. I had been talking, um, and then the, there's a PowerPoint that I left you, um, that says student data update, school committee, April twenty second. Um, Mildred and I had discussed sharing this, are some student data, non-academic data, um, this moment in time. You have the last four years or last three years, and then so far this school year. Um, so I'm just gonna quickly. Need the clicker. Oh, thank you, Mike. All right. Right. So we already talked about chronic absenteeism, um, but I did want to break it out by ethnicity. Um, so you can see our rates over the last, um, four years in school. You can see that there are, and I'll go into sort of my reflections on it, but this gives you a breakdown from two thousand, the, the fifteen sixteen school year to the current school year. Um, around racial, um, groups, what our chronic absentee rates are. Um, and this is mirrored in the one-page spreadsheet. So you can see the numbers here are reflected in the charts. Um, and then you could see it by special population, um, high needs, if you remember, high needs is the category for, um, accommodation of E L Ls, special education and low income, um, economically disadvantaged is just that, you know, the former low income. Then you can look at the, um, our rates for English language learners and special education students. And we've been pretty flat with chronic absenteeism in ge- in general, except that if you look six years ago, the rates were thirty-one percent consistently. And our, the first year that we really dipped was the fifteen sixteen year, and we've stayed like relatively the same. I'm hoping that we can bring that twenty-five point six number down even more, because that's a moving target of chronic absenteeism. It's ten percent of the total days. So we look at, we actually look at it in real time. We have a, um, an internal database that we use. So we can see at every moment in time, how many kids are chronically absent. And that number shifts as more school days go past. Um, obviously if you've already missed twenty-five days of school, you're, you're going to be chronically absent, no question. But we have many kids that are on the cusp. Um, so just some reflections about chronic absenteeism, um, that, um. So there, there has been improvement since two thou-, you know, between, uh, from two thousand to two thousand fifteen, where, um, chronic absentee rates were consistently thirty-one percent from two thousand seven to two thousand fifteen. Um, but as I said before, more than a quarter of all our students are missing eighteen or more days, which is still really hot, exceedingly high. Um, we do have these monthly attendance coalition meetings, which each school presents to the, to, um, a group of community members. Um, and they share their chronic absent plans. We have been meeting very much, uh, very, this year with Holyoke Health Center and talking to pediatricians. Because we do, um, have many kids that miss because of appointments and they don't come to school at all because they have an appointment. And we're trying to encourage them, go to the appointment, you can still come to school in the same day. And we are working on attendance buyback in the district where you can make up hours. If you come in for after-school weekends or vacation academies, you have to do at least half of the school day to get a buyback. Um, that's what the law is to get a credit for a full day of school, you have to be there at least half the day. So for us at elementary middle, it's three and a half hours. At the high school level, it's three hours. So some schools have implemented, PEC has implemented buyback, Donahue, a few of our, especially middle schools have done that. And then we did give credit for students who were, came to the, um, the high school last week, had credit recovery. So we do give credit for kids, not only for academics, but for attendance as well. Um, you could see that our homeless special ed and E L L chronic rates are disproportionately high. And, you know, I do want to point out that absenteeism is more than just kids being sick. I want, it, it is about culture and climate as well. If you feel bullied, if you feel unsafe, that's going to play a role in this. And so the more, that's why the panorama culture surveys are important for us to look at. Cause there's always a connection between the climate in the school and whether kids are coming to school, um, on a regular basis. I will also point out that, uh, I am proud that we've kept the numbers somehow steady, given that we have so many more kids that are not dropping out. And their attendance is among the worst because we're just hanging on with some of them, you know, at Opportunity Academy for an existent, existence. We have high, high numbers of kids. Uh, most of our high school issues, um, you know, our high school numbers get bumped up because we, we've ho- held on to a lot of kids and, you know, um, which I have no problem with. Does affect their chronic absentee numbers, but it means that they're still engaged in school and working towards graduation. Want to go to suspension, um, data? This is, I think, a much more int- you know, this is an interesting picture when you look again, um, by ethnicity and then by special population. You know, overall, there's been declines in suspension. I will tell you, we had some, in two thousand fifteen, the fourteen fifteen school year, the data is very, very low for suspensions. I, I don't know, I mean, almost like, ex- like shockingly low. I, I, I'm not, I, I don't know what that was. I mean, that was also the year the district was headed into receivership, um, that year. And the rates were, um, I, I think, I don't, I, I don't use them as the starting point. Because we had the highest suspension rates up until two thousand fourteen fifteen, and then they dropped, um, like beyond what I've ever seen any district drop. I do think that what you see in two thousand sixteen is more of an accurate number. You know, we still struggle in documentation to getting the suspensions, um, documented. Um, I do think, you know, prior to my tenure, there was this emphasis on like, don't suspend anybody. Which I want to see suspension rates go down, but, you know, suspensions do happen. We have to report them. And, um, you know, there has been a history here of not always reporting every suspension. Um, we have made it clear to schools, like, you're going to be accountable for accuracy of data here. I mean, that's just as important as reducing your, um, suspension rates. I will say my reflections on suspensions are, are, I think, important for us to consider. Going the wrong direction on this. Uh, here we go. Um, you know, I'm pleased to see there's a legitimate decline in suspension since two thousand fifteen. We are on pace this school year, uh, meeting our goal of reducing the percent of school, students suspended and the total number of suspension days during the current school year. We set a goal for ourselves of the total number of days. You don't have that data in front of you. But I also look at that because that, that means how many days kids have been out of school because of suspension. Um, we do, what's helped us a lot is we have this, um, online data dashboard that I'm happy to show school committee members at some point that every school has access to. It does show us in real time, the suspension rates, who the kids are for every school on a daily basis. It's uploaded every night and it pulls from school brains. So I can look at it in real time. Um, and it gives us better documentation about schools. And then when a parent says, oh, my child was suspended and I never got a p- paper, we can check in real time whether the school documented that suspension or not. Um, so that's, that's been a major advancement in, um, our, just our level of documentation. I do have significant concerns that the E L and sped suspension rates are higher than district-wide averages. You know, our Latino rate is pretty much in line with the percentage of Latino students in the district, still too high. But, you know, we have high rates of suspension for E, E L L students and special ed students. Um, the percentage of black and Latino students suspended continues to be disproportionate. It's slightly disproportionate to the overall percentage of black and Latino students in the district. Um, we have to continue to examine alternatives to suspensions. One thing this year was we've seen an increase of in-school suspensions, which I think is a better tool than out-of-school suspensions. But there are other ways of using Saturday school, um, therapeutic supports, detentions, um, uh, you know, restorative practices in schools. Um, as you have heard me say, very simply, you cannot learn when you're not in school. And if you're suspended, you are not out of school suspended, you're not in school. Uh, and the final point I think is important, our equity team efforts to, I mean, there, there is no question that bias plays a role in suspensions. I mean, it just does. I mean, I, I just watched that video, seeing red, uh, that it's gonna, I watched it over the weekend. The same things that, that, it's not that I think people are being outwardly race racist, but there are structural things in our system. And there's implicit bias that plays a role in, in our, um, in our, um, in our, you know, criminal justice system as well as our schools. And it's something we have to look at as an equity team and continue to talk about, um, when we look at these rates. This is a big topic around the state right now in urban districts about the rates of suspension for kids who are, um, you know, who are, um, you know, students of color, and it's something we need to continue to, um, wrestle with. I will point out, uh, to you, I would also point out that the prison, the, you know, the, the pipeline, the school to prison pipeline is real. And it does start with kids being externally suspended from school. Um, I do, uh, on the arrests, I, I have updated this. I had a hard, I, it took me a while to get this information, but I do want to point out, that's incorrect. That should be two thousand eighteen nineteen and two thousand seventeen eighteen. So that's the last two school years. So when you look up there, uh, the number of arrests, um, have gone, I, I'm gonna, I also have with me the numbers from four years ago. I do not have the number of criminal complaints, but in two thousand fourteen fifteen, there were fifty-four arrests in the Holyoke Public Schools. Um, and then in two thousand fifteen sixteen, there were forty-two arrests. I don't know what, how many criminal complaints. Now criminal complaint is still a, you're still charged. It just means that you weren't taken out and arrested, um, in, you basically were not handcuffed and taken out of school. It's still a complaint. They report them differently, um, or the, this, this data, I, we don't keep this data as a school system. I get this data from the Holyoke Police Department. I will also point out that I, it's hard for me to tell if the arrest was a student or was an adult who was arrested on the property because they were, there was a, um, uh, you know, there might have been a incident on school property. Could have been a parent, could have happened after-school hours. It's just reported as occurring at a school. It just, or it could be a drug issue at a, at, on a school campus that's reflected as an arrest. It does not break down. I do not have it broken down by age of the, the youngster. I'm, but this is the nu- these are the numbers that, to the best of my ability, we have broken out, um, around arrests. Did you, you have a question?
Mr. Sheen?
Uh, just specifically on this, so does the police department have that information or?
They, that's who I get the information from.
No, no, but the more, like, the, the more in-depth information that we can, I mean, that's important, I mean.
Yeah, and ba- Beth ethnic background would be helpful too. My guess is that, uh, if I, if I asked again, they could probably get that information. I just don't know their record keeping.
Yeah, or at least age. I mean, we can make some assumptions by age with that. It would be important.
So here, um.
Is, sorry, is that all, if it happened on school grounds? So if it happened at a football game?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And so either it could have been in the school building or you're right, on the grounds of the school.
It'd be interesting if they could start tracking what's happening from bell to bell.
Yes.
So we knew those numbers rather than ju- because, I mean, people use our property that are not, that's like, if they're using a field, is it getting counted towards a school arrest or does it have to be inside?
A field, it counts as school arrest.
But those may not even be any type of school function. That could be.
That's correct. Yes, yes.
I know that, uh, Joint City Council and School Committee, you guys used to, we used to, um, look at arrests and, um, is this even something that could be brought back to the committee to see how you guys can have, um, Captain Feebo bring forward, or Chief, I'm sorry. Sorry about that if you're watching. Um, Chief Feebo, uh, and get kind of like the breakdown. I mean, even going as far back as, um, we were just looking at here, thirty-four, um, let me look at the year. Two thousand sixteen seventeen thirty-four arrests, but how many were actually student-wise? And then eighteen nineteen?
Yep.
And set up a meeting for and ask Chief Feebo, maybe a school resource officer.
It would be Joe Garcia, yeah.
And talk about arrests that were made, um, what's different now than before to go from fifty-two arrests to five arrests? Um, and what the difference was and talk about everything and see what's going on.
Yeah, I do.
Ask for, and ask for more detailed information.
I, I, thank you. I will say, you know, I am pleased with the improved communication between Holyoke Schools and the police department. We now have a liaison in Sergeant Garcia, who I, you know, I do talk with on a regular basis. They, they have taken our input on SROs. We now, we have an SRO on the Dean Campus and the Holyoke High North Campus. Last year we had one on the PEC campus, um, and the, the arrest rate at PEC was very high last year, um, relative to the rest of the buildings. Um, I do think there was a Parkland effect last school year that, um, was, I mean, although it, it was consistent with the years before, before, but we saw a rise in criminal complaints and arrests after, I think it was, uh, Valentine's Day was when Parkland occurred last, last year. So we saw a rise in, um, arrests and, um, and criminal complaints. I think I, I am seeing an improvement in that arrests are reserved for serious safety concerns, um, endangered incidents on school grounds, more so the past. I, I will be honest, we haven't always agreed, but there's been more agreement this year than I've ever seen. Terms of the situations have been brought to my attention, um, are ones that required police intervention rather than a simple fight. The law has also changed, um, which it makes it a lot, um, stricter around when, what you can arrest the chi- you can't arrest for a, disturbing the peace, um, as you used to be able to arrest in a school. But I, I will point out, I do, I want to just reiterate, the school to prison pipeline is real. And I worry tremendously about our youngsters that get, um, in that pipeline. Because, um, the, the data is, um, dis- disheartening to say the least. Um, and if we can prevent kids from getting into that pipeline, um, it will go a long way to ensuring their future success. You know, some of it's unavoidable, but there's a lot of work that we can still do, um, as a, as a community around this. And I, and I, that's why I really do encourage everybody who can come to see the documentary, Seeing Red, on Thursday at In Lasse. Um, I think it's going to stimulate some good conversation about, um, the, the juvenile justices. Um, dropout rate, we've, we've shared this data before, maybe not by ethnicity. I think what's most concerning, I'm just going to jump to the end. Um, well, pot, there's been a positive trend in dropout decline. Opportunity Academy has definitely played a significant role in reducing that. Um, but we, the, I am very worried about the spe- number of special ed students that drop out. Um, we have way too many subs- substantially separate students who were in. Um, we have way too many subs- substantially separate students who were in separate programs going through middle school that when they get to high school, they they um they don't see a path for them and they drop out of school. Um, it, those numbers are alarming. You know, students who are in the therapeutic intervention, who are in functional programs. Um, and I've been, I've had conversations with Mickey Buell, who oversees Opportunity Academy. He's been pushing on me around, we've got to have more resources to serve special education students at the Opportunity Academy because the kids are telling us that it works for them, but we have a resource teacher, but we don't have enough staff there who can work with students who maybe have more significant mental health challenges or who um, you know, require more intensive supports. And that's, that is a gap for us right now. Uh, we think the newcomer academy has also helped reduce the number of E L dropouts, but the numbers do remain high. I mean, these are two of our most vulnerable populations and when you look at the dropout numbers, they're highest for English learners and for special education students. Um, and so, yeah, while I'm pleased to see the dr- the decline, it's still too high for um our most um, you know, our m- our most high need populations. I'm going to stop talking. Doesn't hurt, but it doesn't sound great.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Want to squirt? Ms. Feliciano Sims?
Oh, NSBA, yes.
No, Irene Varan student.
Just threw me off when you looked at me.
Do you have any question? Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody have any questions? So um, I'm sorry. I'm wondering if we could break this down even further.
Yes.
So looking at special education, breaking it down by disability.
I can look into that.
Then, once you do it by disability.
All categories, you mean?
Nope, special education.
No, 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 but um all the data.
Oh, yeah, all the data, yeah. And then, once you do that, then break it down by ethnicity.
Within the disability.
Within the disability.
I think we, yeah.
Anybody have any other questions? No? Awesome. Alrighty, so moving on. Update on National School Board Conference. Mr. Shan, would you like to provide an update?
I'll turn that over to Irene. She attended on behalf of the district.
Uh, first and foremost, I want to thank um um Mr. Dr. Strike and the school committee for allowing me to go to the NSBA. Um, I had a wonderful time. I got to meet a lot of um school committee members across the state and also got an opportunity to, one, see Mildred get voted on for the Northeast um Hispanic Caucus. So congratulations and also for um Devin Sheen to being elected on the Northeast NSBA Board of Directors. Um, I joined, I did a couple of seminars, which was really great. I joined, um, I attended one with restraints and talking about restraints inside the classrooms and um opportunities to kind of have different kind of um prototypes and different kind of choices there um to kind of help the student and facilitate um even before the child gets restrained. So there was a lot of proactive um interventions. Um, I got to volunteer with the Hispanic um Caucus um on their food drive. I forgot the name of it.
It was, I know it was a a school in Philadelphia.
Yeah, um where they were building bags um and it was done by the community laters. Um, so we um built over two hundred thousand bags um for students, um homeless students across the districts, which was really great. Um, just like I said, I had a really great time. I have some really great notes, um some PowerPoints and feedback. So if any of the school committee members would love to um have some of that information, I'd be more than happy to share. Thanks.
Thank you. And I know you met somebody who wrote a book.
Oh, yes.
Regarding social emotional learning through experience.
Yes, that was really great. So it was really interesting and I have to actually say this story because it was kind of funny. We were going through the exhibit hall and one of the um exhibit halls, the first thing that you said was um was that they said it um it was about behaviors um inside the classroom and the 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 message was, what do you do to stop it? It's the, like, almost their fault, like, it was a student's fault um for having these various behaviors. And so they take data on based on the student's behavior and then what you can do, almost like a punitive thing. But then two exhibits down, it was this um lady who wrote a book with her son who had mental health issues and was getting pu- um disciplined in the classroom because nobody realized that he had a disability and that there was so much going on um inside of him that he just couldn't communicate that. So it was really great to meet the author and kind of have that discussion. I actually reached out to her to see if, hopefully, that maybe we can get our books donated um to our libraries here.
The book was uh Twenty Things That You Can Do To Help Me, something to that extent where she uses her son to, as an um, what is it that he would need in order to be able to succeed? And one of the ones that I liked the most was um, um, don't look at, don't don't um look at my, that's what I can't do. It's more of praising me for what I can do.
Right.
So I mean, it's a really good book. That was the selling point. So anybody who wants to buy one now. Deb, uh, Mr. Shan?
I'll just say one thing. I mean, um, I would encourage anyone who's interested in either attending the State School Committee Conference or National Conference to at least have that conversation with Dr. Strike and Liz, talk about if that's something that would be possible. I know Ronnie has been to many of them and uh uh Mildred and Irene have started going recently in the past few years. Uh, but it really is something you, it, I would say especially, probably more from our state conference and maybe the national conference at times, but it is professional development that you'll get nowhere else. And I think it, there are things that you learn as school committee members. You, just if you can take away just a few things, you've taken away a lot, just whether it's reading data or learning new things about the budget, I would really encourage you to see if you can block off time, see if it works with the budget. Uh, like when, when I go to to anything in this national conference that Mildred went to, neither one of us actually went at any cost to the district uh at all. So it was just um Irene and I think it was only her registration and maybe train uh because she bunked with Mildred.
I'm the bunkie.
But so it is, it especially the state conference too. I, there's, no one pays for me to go uh at all. So it's just, there may be an opportunity. So I would at least encourage you to look at that and look at that development because it does provide a lot and I would encourage you to um see if there's sessions that interest you, even if you can only go for a day. Uh, and the national conference next year is in Chicago and I mean, Chicago isn't a cheap city, but there's some pretty good flights out of Bradley to get there. So um, have any thoughts about that?
And what's really good is um, because I really think we need to really start looking at collaborating with our fellow school committee members across the state. Chicago Bees is a good example. Um, they also have, getting close to our kind of population of students within the schools and it's uh, what are they doing? Um, how could, because we're kind of all in the same boat. Uh, we're all struggling, especially with mental health um in the schools. So how can we all work collaboratively to really look at how to address the issue and and actually provide, bring in the services that are going to be effective for our students?
Yeah, and I just kind of want to go back on that. Like, it was, it was so inspi- inspiring and empowering to hear like, we're not the only ones with the issues um across on a national level. Um, we were fortunate enough to kind of meet with a lo- um other mi- Hispanic minorities and having some similar conversations. And I think as, again, as a minority woman, you know, to have that representation for my, for either my children or the children here in the city, kind of was really good to see like and have those open discussions. And even though we didn't agree to uh to agree to disagree, there was opportunities for us to learn more. And also the feedback that you got back, it was great to, um, when we met with, um, I think it was um Texas, where they actually took um a PowerPoint for minority um students and inside the classroom and bilingual classes and they used the concept from California. So California created this amazing video and how data um supported and what we needed to do and the um two thousand twenty census, like all those pieces were all put together and we, we were able to have that discussion. So again, I would encourage any of my other school committee members to really think about that and have that conversation.
Absolutely. Twenty twenty census is very important. And that's something that we all really got to educate ourselves on and help our families. Alrighty, moving on to superintendent's communications, Mr. Dr. Strike.
Just uh quickly, I'm going to try to limit my talking is uh thank you to those of you who participated in the chairs of the Joint Committee on Education Visit to Holyoke on Thursday. Um, I thought it was a productive discussion. I left you all a copy in the folder of the memo we gave to them um at Donahue, so you may not have gotten it before, which details some accomplishments, but also talks about where we have gaps um in resources as a school district. Um, school choice, we have already opened the window up for school choice for next year coming to Holyoke and you can see the breakdown. We're reporting openings at the different grade levels. It's in my uh memo to the school committee for today. Um, we just had a successful week of Vacation Academies. Donahue School and then Holyoke High North offered um some MCAS prep as well as um credit recovery. Um, I do want to point out at the, at our retreat, we talked about the Bright Program, which was for kids with mental health um being reintroduced to school. We were, we did get awarded not only one of the grants, we got both of them. So that means that PEC School, both Veritas and PEC as well as Holyoke High North uh or Holyoke High will have this um program in the school. And I will, I will bring more information at a future meeting so you can understand what it is. It's, there were each over a hundred thousand dollar grants. We also won a teacher diversification grant from the Department of Education around recruiting and retaining more teachers of color, particularly looking at investing in our paraprofessionals, which you've heard me talk about before. There's also a list of, there's many events over the next two weeks. This week is jam-packed, including Saturday. There's a Math Power Academy happening. Um, all of those are listed on your um uh in your um notes. And then uh, don't forget the Holyoke Transitions Academy has their ribbon cutting ceremony next Tuesday at Open Square. I'd love for uh some of you to attend that um event. Um, I also left you a copy of our new brochure, um which we're give, we will be distributing to families. It's English on one side and then Spanish on the back. Um, if you want additional copies to distribute, you know, please let me know, but you know, we only have so so many of these uh to give out, but it's a good, I think, promotional material for the um for the school. Um, and then finally, I do have the um bracelets that we made at the retreat for those of you who haven't received them yet. Um, and if I don't have yours, it's because you weren't there or because we lost yours. Um, but I do have those, which I'll give out at the end of the meeting. Um, and I think that concludes my comments.
Great. Um, so moving on to new business, is there a motion to second? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to old business, any old business? Mr. Shan?
Just an update on the school building committee. Uh, so there is a meeting on um Wednesday at
Seven o'clock.
Seven. Uh, City Council Chambers with the uh the name of the committee, Chartering Rules Committee uh to discuss whether or not they will recommend to the full council to place on the ballot a debt exclusion. Uh, and I think there's some, the language around that in one of the reports, one of the updates from the receiver here. Uh, so I'd encourage you to attend uh that meeting. I mean, the school building committee is still moving uh forward uh as we need to with things. Uh, we are meeting this week uh because we need to finalize, we need to take a vote and then in a couple of weeks finalize a vote regarding the school building for submission to the MSBA. Uh, but we are hoping uh that things move along as scheduled just to keep down uh cost escalations with that. I mean, many of you have been to all the forums. Uh, we've had lots of forums, lots of meetings. I mean, we had one at the Senior Center two weeks ago that was very well attended. Uh, I just have to say around the building projects, whether you hear things out in the community that are for or against it or that maybe you have questions about it. I think the most important thing is with any of these types of projects or anything we do at the school district that we as a committee just work to dispel some of the rumors and to put out the facts. And uh, because there's a lot of things that are said, but they aren't necessarily facts and just that we know a lot of the facts. You've gotten minutes, you've you've read things, you've seen what the committee has done. So let's just make sure that we, uh, whether we disagree with someone or we may not support something, that at least we're talking facts uh and not just hype uh around certain things. Uh, and I think that's one of the most important things that we uh is we can stay educated with our facts around the project. But hope to see you there on Wednesday.
Please, we encourage everyone to go. Um, any other old business announcements? Uh, you first, Mr. Shan?
So May seventeenth uh at three o'clock, the Carlos Vega Fund uh is having their uh annual recognition. Uh, this year's recipient of um their recognition is former Superintendent George Counter uh for a lot of the work that he did uh in the district many years ago uh about around racial equity and social justice issues. I will be out of town for them, but I would really encourage those of you to uh attend or to talk with George. Um, I, obviously, I don't think he was super, maybe I was in elementary school, but he was a neighbor of mine uh actually uh growing up, but I I would encourage you to attend uh the event and just hear about some of the things. It really gives kind of a perspective on uh kind of where the schools were and where they are now. Um, and Liz can also fill in probably some great school committee meetings that happened uh during those years. Uh, but it was, uh, it's at three o'clock at Wisteria Hurst. Um, but I would, on the May seventeenth, so it'd be great for those of you who are around. Um, I mean, it's difficult because it is during the workday, but I mean, if can attend or if there's anyone from the school department that can attend, just, I mean, there's no cost to attend. It's just a thing and there's a, a lot of the artifacts from Carlos Vega's life will be on display at it as well, so.
Thank you. The other thing is uh um the first week in May, May fifth to the eleventh is nationally known as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. So we encourage people to support by wearing green. Um, real quickly on what it actually means when I find the little. So Children's Mental Health Week is dedicated to increasing public awareness and the triumphs and challenges in children's mental health and emphasizing the importance of family and youth involvement in the children's mental health mov- movement. So uh, wear green, right? Alrighty, any other announcements other than the CPAC has their Autism Awareness Night on Wednesday, the twenty-fourth, so in two more days. Six o'clock, lots of resources for families that have children with um autism at McMahon School. So we hope to see you all there. Uh, six to seven thirty. But remember, if you do attend this Wednesday at six, you got to leave out of there really quick by six thirty and make it on time for seven o'clock at City Hall. Alrighty, so hearing no more, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor? All those opposed? And motion passes, meaning adjourned at eight oh nine.